11:02, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Thank you, Lexi. I'm going to welcome everybody to the town of North Topsail Beach Alderman Meeting today, which is a special meeting for us since we weren't able to meet on Wednesday. I'm gonna call the meeting to order, and I want to thank everybody for coming today that's in the audience, and I want to welcome the Aldermen-elect that are also in the audience. And we're gonna go ahead and get started. So called the meeting to order, and Alderman Grant, you have the invocation today.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, I'm gonna ask for an approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second, we're gonna discuss, right?
If I have a second, okay. Any discussion on the agenda?
If I could, I would like to, because I had a couple of quick questions on the finance, I think it's under consent agenda, finance, I forgot my mouse, I apologize.
The Finance Department?
Yeah, I just had two quick questions on it, but I wanted to pull it out because it's under consent.
And do you want to put it under continuing?
Continuing's fine, yeah.
Okay, so...
Yeah, it relates to what was filed, some of the language, I just had a question.
Okay, so we'll make that F?
That's fine, thank you.
For Finance, is there anything else? Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then we're just gonna move right on. So the next item would be public presentations with GWI contract update, and this is from Alderman Olszewski.
Correct, we have an update from our contractor, GWI, and I believe they're gonna join us.
She's nailed.
We're having an update from our contractor, GWI, who's our outsourced accounting services group right now, and getting an update from them. Good morning.
Good morning, Beth, how are you? Can you hear us? Beth, can you hear us?
Apparently not.
Anybody have her on cell that they can text her and let us, let her know we can't hear?
Okay, thanks. I think she's just got us on mute, would be my guess.
Hi, Beth, can you hear us?
Why don't you wave?
She might be trying again.
Okay. This is a lot to... No, but I mean, I haven't had a chance to look at it, so...
Right.
That's a good report.
You want to shift it down and keep going?
Well, let's give her a minute and see if she...
She can't hear us.
Beth, can you hear us now? Beth, can you hear us now? Testing, can you hear us, Beth?
Yes, I can now.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Good morning, Beth, thank you for joining. Thank you for joining the meeting, we're looking forward to your update.
I'm sorry, would you say that last part again?
We're looking forward to your update today.
You're breaking up.
I don't know whether this is gonna work. I said we were looking forward to your update, can you hear us?
I can now.
Okay, terrific.
Did you get the document that I sent?
Yes, we have that in front of us.
We just got it.
We just got it.
All right. Ah, then mine just went away. Hang on, hold on just a second.
Hey, be careful, they're not numbered. What's your first page look like?
The budget.
Just this budget, all right, my bad, I got it, I got it.
Okay, so I guess I'm wanting to understand what you're looking for.
If you could give us a general update as to where we are in regards to the work that you all have been doing for the town of late, that would be terrific.
Okay, so on the document in front of you, you can see the kinds of things that we are still completing as, or working on as far as the budget. There are some issues with invoices, we have created some fillable forms so that staff can use them, there'll be consistency, and over the last couple of months, obviously, there have been things for board presentations, for board meetings, that Deborah Mack has been preparing. She's been helping in working on the, getting the new finance officer hired, and interviewing, and working to get another accountant one. Again, the budget items are ongoing as there are overspends in some line items, but the department itself has not overspent, then there are line item transfers that have to be done. And again, as you can see through her list, budget ordinances that she has prepared for meetings over the last couple of months. And again, that is the kind of thing that would be ongoing. The one-time items would be the actual preparation of the budget for the next year. So obviously, we've done that, and we are measuring against the budget for fiscal year '26, and, but again, the things you see on this list are pretty much items that are ongoing that would be a part of the day-to-day, week-to-week kind of things. She does have a list, this has been on the invoice, the support for the invoice, the preparation. She always includes a list of outstanding items of things that have not been handled or completed yet. In the FEMA and DEQ for the grant items, over the last couple of months, she's been finishing up the closeout of the CAT G, the CAT Z, and you can see on this document that we've sent you that these projects have been, are in the process of closing, and you can see the money for the CAT B and CAT G that are coming to the town, and it's well over, it's around $3 million. Again, closing out these projects, we are close to getting them all finished, and again, working with DEQ and FEMA to complete that, and once those are done, then it would be just sort of the ongoing projects that you're closing out in the years to come. Accounts payable, you can see a list over September and October, there's anywhere from 33 to 70 invoices that are processed, some have had to be sent back for approvals to department heads, some have had to be sent back to vendors for better information, but you can see that she's processing anywhere from 33 to 70 a week. When she processes those, there has to be, from the invoice, there's entry into your system, you have to enter the vendor, their address, quite a bit of other information, print the PDF, make sure that the invoices and the checks to be written match, and that they are accurate, and so then that review is done, and again, another ongoing item that will be a part of the week-to-week processing.
So Beth, before you go on, I know you guys have been working with the auditors, do you think your work with them is coming to a close?
Yes, we do. They have turned over, we have turned over the fixed asset piece. When our staff tried to validate the assets, there were assets on your listing that, for instance, the police chief said there were a couple of cars that were listed on your asset listing that he says he doesn't have, and then when you try to match up the town's fixed asset listing with what the departments say they have, it doesn't match. The fixed asset listing lacks VIN numbers for vehicles, it lacks years that the vehicle was purchased, so we've turned that over to your new finance director because he can more closely work with your department heads to figure that out. But yes, we have talked with Lee, and we are pretty close to being finished with what he needs, and he's expecting to be able to present his audit in December, so he's pretty much wrapping up.
Okay, and so we had...
And I'll just...
Can I, can I go on with one more question?
Sure.
Okay, so last year, we had issues with creating 1099s, and the work that you all have done to clean up the vendor list and get the vendors in better shape, I kind of wanted an update as to where we think we are, and if that we're ready to do our 1099s this year without issue.
Absolutely. The, once we got the W9s from all the many, many vendors that you never had one, then Deborah Mack has been pretty, now, that's been the interim finance officer's responsibility to obtain the W9s, but Deborah Mack has been keeping an eye on that, and so we believe that you are prepared to be able to push out your 1099s this year without all of the problems we had last year. We think you are up to date with W9s for all the vendors you have. I think there may be one that refused, and I can check this with Deborah Mack, one that refused to send one, but other than that, you're in good shape for your 1099s.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask a question? One is, thanks, thank Deborah for, this is Rick, thank Deborah for her work on the FEMA stuff, I'm actually starting to understand where we are because of the way she put it together, and maybe you can't answer this, maybe she can. When we're looking at everything we filed for, and I know some of those are closed out, any, and again, I don't mean to put her on the spot, but it's good to have the number sitting in front of us, is understanding as we're looking forward how much we're gonna get, when we're gonna get the money back, and I know that's not your, that's not your call, but it's like, when I look at the, for the first time, I feel like we've got a handle on where that money is, particularly how much money is still owed to us from different projects, and the spreadsheet she put together, is that something maybe over the next whatever period of time, she could kind of, because as I look at something like, if we, and I don't understand the process like she does, obviously, but if we file for it, then they have to respond, and you have to go through all these processes and stuff, so there's a monitoring that after it's even, like, there's a monitoring situation, right, as that goes forward until all the dollars come back, right? And so, I don't, I don't know what that involves, but it looks like with that much money hanging out, it's obviously somebody, something we have to watch, and it looks like she's really on top of that, so.
And I would say you, tell you that she is, and on this report, you'll see there's right at $3 million coming your way.
Right.
And then she sent me another this morning that looks like there's another $11 million coming your way. She has a great rapport, FEMA's been very pleased with the detail that she has sent them, so there's not gonna be like processing holdup because of lack of information or lack of things they need, but, and she has a great rapport with the FEMA people that she's been working with, and I'm pretty sure that we can get you an approximate date of when you'll be receiving those monies, because obviously, that helps you plan how to spend it.
Well, that, that's why it's great, because we got that beach project coming up, and it'd be nice to know, you know, if we've got a shot of getting that back within that, within that timeframe, so thank her, that was a very well-done on the FEMA stuff, that's the first time I've really understood how far out we are, so thank her.
And let me, let me just qualify this, you know they're on strike on a layoff, so I will ask Deborah Mack what, where that puts things, that's, that's the other issue, is the fact that the feds are not working right now, and how much that might slow things down.
Thank you.
I have one question, it's the first time I've seen it in here, and Beth, I don't think it's really for you, it's more just a comment for Alice, our town manager, it looks like we had a few staff members apply for tuition reimbursement, which I'm always thrilled to see, but it doesn't look like they followed the process appropriately for their reimbursement, so I don't think our, I don't think our process and procedures are very complicated when it comes to tuition reimbursement, so I don't know what we have to do to our, with our department heads to make sure that they fully understand how to get through it.
And I, I think that that's a great point, you're, whether it's Deborah Mack or whether it's your new finance officer, if the department heads don't support the policies and procedures, you'll just continue to have problems and things that will eat into your efficiencies, so I think that's a great point, that, and I would tell you, here's where you are now, and the department heads should recognize this, because they did not follow the proper procedures, the town could deny these reimbursements, and that hurts the staff member, the employee who got the training. So again, the department heads need to recognize by them not following the proper procedures, that the town could withhold this money, and again, it's on the department head, not the employee.
Yeah, I agree, and I thank you very much for pointing that out, because we do put that money in the budget for a reason, we want it to be used by the staff members. Okay, that's all I have.
Can I ask the mayor just a, on the finance questions I've got, I thought it might be Deborah Mack there, because there's just two things about that financial report, so I don't, I didn't want to put Beth on the spot.
It's Alice, I don't know, ask Alice which one would be appropriate.
It's about the ACH stuff and stuff, I think you can, I think Alice can handle it, they're not that complicated questions, I just didn't want to put...
I have one more question for Beth.
So I think we're fine.
Okay. So Beth, as we get looking towards year end and going into the new year, we had, the department heads had spreadsheets last year, and we had the new budget created, which is a big spreadsheet to my understanding, so do they have access to those now so that they could work with them?
Absolutely, yes, yes, it's on your servers, not ours. The workbook is what it is, a budget workbook, and Deborah Mack and Sylvia both have been putting together processes, how, how things work. Deborah Mack, Sylvia has done so, we had those written for AP, accounts payable, how to pay the bills, and the protocols to go through, Sylvia has prepared it for the bank reconciliation and how that works, Deborah Mack is doing it for your budget, so we will be leaving behind not only the files, but how to use them.
Terrific, thank you.
Excellent.
Any additional questions for Ms. Wood?
I haven't read this yet, so...
Well, thank you so much for joining our call today, I greatly appreciate you being flexible with your schedule for us.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and, oh, and I was just, I was gonna say that I'm not sure what the board is looking for, but Deborah Mack and Sylvia are putting together a timeline of how to transition out, and we're putting together a timeline for training your new finance officer, Wayne, and, and then when we'll turn over what we've been doing to him, and so we're looking to have everything turned over, have him trained on, and everything turned over to him by the end of December, and then if need be, where our contract goes through the end of January, we will be around, we will be available to answer questions as it might need be, but I'm not sure what you had in mind, but I know that the idea is for us to transition out and leave everything in the hands of your new finance officer plus the new accountant you'll be getting, so I just want to make sure that works for you, I don't want there to be any surprises or to feel like that we let you down.
Now, I think that's perfect, Beth, we greatly appreciate all the work that's going into the training of our new staff members, and also the transition and you guys being available to answer questions, I think that that is perfect.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
And we, we will finish that up, and Sylvia has hers done, Deborah Mack's still working on hers, but we will have that finished up within the next week, and then we'll send it to Alice to distribute to the board to make sure it's to your liking.
Perfect.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Have a good day.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, we are gonna move on to the manager's report, Ms. Darian.
Thank you, Mayor, good morning, everyone. First off, staff updates, I would like to say welcome to Mr. Wayne Johannessen, who's in the audience with us today, he's our new finance officer, for those of you who have not had a chance to meet him yet, Wayne has officially started with us earlier in Oct- October, and Wayne's background, most recently, he has worked with Duke University as their grants and contracts manager, so he's well, well-versed in all things grants management, which will certainly be an asset for our town, and has extensive experience as well in financial management reporting, so we're glad to have you on board, welcome, Wayne.
Welcome.
Also, we have in attendance with us this morning are Ms. Donna Sayer, who is our new permit specialist and deputy town clerk, so welcome, welcome, Donna, we're glad to have you on board as well, she recently started with us a few weeks back as well, and has hit the ground running, she most recently has served with the town of Burgah in their community development department as coordinator, and has worked as a paralegal for municipalities as well, so we're very glad that she's on board, and so far, we have hit the ground running in both directions, and welcome.
Excellent.
Welcome.
Last but not least, the accountant one position is still posted, is open, we are continuing to accept applications for that position, we had one round of interviews already in testing that has been conducted, but we're continuing to go through applications. Beach projects and operations, on October 9th, we started to see effects from the nor'easter that was impacting our area throughout the latter part of that week into the weekend, that event prompted some property owners to contact the state for emergency permitting that late Friday afternoon, which I'm sure everyone has, was seen on the news and in the media recently. Monday morning, after the event, staff, public work specifically, was busy removing debris that washed up on the beach, and they continued those efforts throughout the week, so thank you to them and their quick, quick efforts on that front. Also, staff worked to immediately send pictures that we were seeing to the Division of Coastal Management on what we were seeing in the field, our planning department was instrumental in that, so thanks, thank you to them. We've continued to work with... Um, we've continued to work with property owners, um, as they contact us, um, and refer them to the state for any assistance. Some communities have received, um, permits for sandbagging efforts that are going to be taking place here soon along the beach, um, more so in the north end area. Our, um, beach engineer, Fran Way, is here as well. Um, I requested a dashboard assessment of erosion that T I Coastal, um, provided. I sent that assessment to the board for review. So that could be talked about more during, um, the engineer's report, uh, if there's any questions on that assessment. PTC number eight. Work continues to be on pause for the season effective May second. The project still remains at the CRC level with FEMA. Engineer Way and I have been in communication concerning the upcoming work plan with the contractor, who is S T Wooton, uh, to resume the dune project work. The contractor is scheduled to mobilize the first week of January twenty twenty-six, and the project is expected to be completed within three months. Um, probably will wrap up sooner than that, but, uh, worst-case scenario, we expect is three months.
That'll be a truck, right?
Yes, yes. And, um, yes, that is a, a truck haul project. And, um, so they will be can, picking up where they left off, which was in the area of Topsail Dunes. So they will pick up there, replace sand in the dunes, uh, for what was surveyed as lost during PTC eight event, and continue working north. Um, and the project page was also updated with that work schedule as well. Old FEMA projects update. Uh, Beth, um, touched on that, um, that a lot of work has been done, uh, with our assistance on, um, closing out these old projects from Dorian Florence specifically. Um, we did receive, um, good news this week, um, that while, yes, um, they are shut down right now, the state has been very communicative. Um, Amanda, uh, the state has been really great with helping us and to help facilitate that bridge with FEMA in getting these things closed out. Um, and we received notice this week that for, uh, Dorian specifically, the CAT G work, um, we're anticipating, um, you were asking about dollar amounts earlier. We're anticipating, um, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-one dollars, um, coming to us, and that was for two submissions. We anticipate that money, um, coming to us shortly. Can't give you an exact timeframe, of course, but we were told that, that those payments are being processed. Um, CAT B Florence work, um, as well. Uh, we submitted, um, uh, previously, they approved seventy-five percent, um, which was around three point two million dollars. Um, we have since, um, uploaded additional things into the portal to request for, uh, payments for overruns. Uh, we did receive news this week that, um, they are considering those, um, those overruns. So, uh, potential to have more money coming back to us. Um, and the balance owed on the Florence project is two million forty-five thousand, six hundred and eighty-six dollars. So, uh, so we will be, we anticipate, um, getting an influx of funding, um, soon. Or at least we have the, it seems like we have a good commitment at this point from, from FEMA and the state. So good news on that front. Events. Thank you to everyone who participated in the Halloween pet parade in costume contest this past month. It was great. It always is. Thank you specifically to staff, uh, for all the logistics that go into coordinating that event. Um, the, the setup and teardown is always great fun. Um, so appreciate the assistance on that. And to Pet Supplies Plus, of course, for sponsoring the event. Um, that allows us to hold it each year. Um, it was our third year, and thank you, uh, to the judges who have the hardest job of all. Board members. The mayor and the board was there to judge and pick the, pick the, pick the winners, uh, for the evening. So appreciate, uh, your help on that front. I, I wouldn't want that, I wouldn't want that job. That was hard. The fourth annual Christmas tree lighting, that is coming up around the corner as well, November nineteenth. It'll be held, held here at Town Hall, six P M. Um, Public Works has started installing the snowflakes, uh, this week, um, on the utility poles for the holiday season. Um, we anticipate that'll probably wrap up actually today. So we're, uh, well ahead of, ahead of schedule, which is great. The Christmas tree is scheduled to start to go up next week. Um, work out any potential kinks, although then that never happens. So we should be able to work through whatever comes up next week and be ready for the tree lighting. Um, and I know that the, um, snowflakes have been requested to be put on the agenda, so we, I'll talk more about that later when, for that agenda item.
Mine's up, so I'm good. You know where mine's coming to.
Yeah.
Is there any questions for the town manager?
Quick question for you. So Beth had mentioned about eleven million coming back, right?
Yes.
And when I look, and I, I believe this is the case, I just want to make sure. So I know what our cash position is, because that's in the report. That's excellent. So none of that, the eleven million, none of the thirty-four is showing up as a receivable. That's actually cash, as I read that cash in the bank. So eleven will be on top of that. And when I looked at our budget, and you could, if you could, maybe we check with Deborah Mack, or you probably know this. There's nothing that we would see that is going to eat in substantially to that eleven million dollars on the beach thing, except for the last payment, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's very, very good in terms of where we are. Thank you. Perfect, thanks.
That's why I said very good news this week.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Cash is still king, right?
Yes.
Okay, then we're going to move on to the open forum. Do we have anybody signed up?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have one sign up, Susan Meyer.
Hi, Susan. You haven't been here in a while.
I know. As you can see, I've been busy.
Yes.
Susan Meyer, two-two-two-four, New River Inlet Road, um, Unit one thirty-eight. As you all know, I've cherished our town of North Topsail Beach, proudly known as nature's tranquil beauty. It's been an honor to contribute to the community over the years by serving on various committees, and even holding the position of our alderman for a time. At present, I chair the planning board and also sit on the Board of Adjustment. Regrettably, a certain harshness has recently disturbed the harmony of our town. While I might attribute this tension to the recent campaign, one newly offic- official, one newly elected official, has nonetheless chosen to launch verbal attacks against my family and cast doubts on my impartiality and potential conflicts of interest since this, his election. This individual's personal interest was addressed during the planning board meeting on June twelfth. For anyone who shares these concerns, I encourage you to listen to the recording of that meeting or watch it, where no resolution was reached, aside from forwarding the matter to the Board of Aldermen, without any input from the planning board, given the absence of the site plan or any formal proposal. Because I serve on the, on these boards at the discretion of the Board of Aldermen, and due to the volatile nature and unprofessionalism of this unco- incoming alderman, I now find myself feeling unsafe, both mentally and physically. Consequently, I'm tendering my resignation from both positions effective immediately. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. Is there anybody else who has signed up?
No, ma'am.
Yes, please. Can I, the next item is the consent agenda. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now remember, we've pulled out that finance department item. All right, so then we are going to move on to continuing business. The first one is Fund Thirty, the Dial-Cordy E I S amendment. And the mayor is going to request a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-six dash twenty-six dot twenty-five Fund Thirty Dial-Cordy E I S amendment as presented. Does anybody have any questions?
You want a motion to approve first, right? Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? And just, so Alice, I just want to make sure everybody understands what this is. This is so that we can get finished up with the E I S study.
Yes, this, um, this agreement is what, um, Dial-Cordy had submitted back to me, back at budget time for consideration. Um, I said that, you know, at one point coming up, this would be for, uh, before the board for formal consideration, for them to continue the work, um, through the E I S plan, um, with the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, a- as we know, they're kind of, uh, in pause mode right now. Um, but the intent is to keep them, um, still working while, for the information that we, that has been requested of us that we know that they need to continue with the plan. Um, and, um, Steve Dow is here this morning, um, if there's any questions, as well as, um, Engineer Way, of course, um, who's been, um, working on this from the beginning. So if there's any, um, questions, they're, um, here to address those as well.
Yes, and Steve's here. Um, if he could please perhaps give us a quick, a quick idea of how much longer this is going to take. Okay, and just the backstory on this is that we, we backed off on the effort because of Hurricane Florence. And then no sooner do we get through with that recovery, we had COVID. So we've had all these, these great reasons why we're where we are, but we need to, we need to wrap this up. We need to get it done. I'm kind of getting sick and tired of people pinning me against the wall in food line, wanting to know where the hell everything's at. Okay, there we go. Good morning. Thanks, Tom. I, I, I understand your pain and, and, and feelings about this and, and how long it's gone on. The Core really controls the schedule. We can just provide them with material as they need it, which is the goal here, is to jump back in, give them documents they need so they keep moving. And the goal is really to get the draft document out on the street as quick as possible, so we can start getting comments and the process really moves forward. As to how long that's going to take, I think that's probably better asked of the Core. I don't, I, I can't, I can't dictate what their timeframe of review and process is. All I know is we know what we need to submit. Uh, they need two documents from us to be able to process the draft E I S. So that's our first, first goal, is to get those two documents to them. And they've been going under, undergoing the legal review, I think, the past six months. I think that's correct, right, Alice? They've been legal review of the balance of the documents that they have. So with, with, with what they need now, get that, then they should be ready to get the draft document out on the street, which really formally starts the process.
And the last schedule that we received from the Core indicated, um, a permit decision in summer of twenty-twenty-six timeframe. So that was the last formal schedule we received from the Core.
When you say permit decision in the summer of twenty-twenty-six, does that mean the E I S has already been out for review, and then it's the permit decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so then the E I S should be done shortly, and to Tom's frustration, I would echo it, just because, eh, when we talk to the Core, Dial-Cordy is the holdup. When we talk to, to Dial-Cordy, the Core is the holdup. We just need everybody to work together and get this done, because I have been on the board, got on the board.
The I S part of it, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, I understand the delays, Tom, that you had echoed, but the whole rest of the world figured out how to work during COVID.
Yeah, I know. And, and I'm, I'm certainly not, certainly not stating COVID as an excuse or a viable reason why at all. It's, it's, that's what we were told. And, and, um, and it wasn't acceptable then, and five years later, it's, it's even less acceptable. And again, you know, every time, like Joanne said, we get a lot of this, and, and, and it's unacceptable. And now, you know, we were supposed to have a meeting with the Core on, what, was it October the seventh?
We haven't heard back.
Well, the government is closed, you know, so we're closed for business. The time marches on, and we see what time marching on without some sort of an anchor up there at the north end has caused us very recently and, and very graphically, uh, here recently. Um, it's, it's not good. Um, the other question I have is how much more money is this going to cost?
We don't need any more. We're done with this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, you heard it here.
Well, and what I would say, and I think the board would echo this, is, is we are committed to getting this process completed and out for review, and, you know, because it's a long process, even once this goes out for review. It's not like something that's magic, magic happens. So we're committed to doing it. We appreciate the fact that you all are as well, and if we could just please get it wrapped up, so we can get it out in everybody's hands to read, that would be wonderful.
My only comment was, my second comment was highlighting what the mayor just said. Understand that when this comes out, if it comes out in the summer, that's not the end of the process. That's basically starting this thing. And I think what you're asking us for today is we don't want to be the thing holding this up. We don't want to be the one they're pointing fingers at. So going forward to what you're doing, Alice, is they can point where they want, but it's not going to be at us. Fair?
Right.
Yes. And also, too, the, the critical next step, of course, will be to, for Dial-Cordy to continue to work and work right now on what the Core needs and make sure that's done as soon as possible.
Yes.
So that when they come back online, that we can continue, well, the committee, um, what, whoever the board determines will be that committee, will continue the meetings that we have been holding, um, on a regular basis, just to keep, make sure that we're following a schedule.
Yep.
And I've kept up with Emily at the Core, so we, we know what, what she needs for their next step. So we're, we're ready to act on those two.
So the Core's basically told you that checks in the mail.
I don't, I don't know if that.
But since the mail's cut, it's, it stopped, it's, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like.
But, but in the meantime, we can work on two documents.
When I first joined this board, I was asked a question about this thing, and I said, and when I got elected for four years, my answer was, I hope I get something back on the C I S within four years, and that is a very frustrating thing for this board.
Uh, yes, I requested a motion.
We have a motion in a second. We can vote.
Is everybody in favor?
Aye.
Anyone deny? Okay, we're all good.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item, which is B, is, uh, C A twenty-twenty-six dash twenty-six dot twenty-six, contract modification for the inlet management plan, E I S Dial-Cordy. Um, so what I'm doing is I'm requesting a motion to approve ordinance number C A twenty-six dash twenty-six dot twenty-five as presented, and approves the contract modification as presented for the inlet management plan, E I S as submitted by Dial-Cordy. So this ties into what we just spoke about.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, Mr. Fran Way, here in person. Is that time of year?
You look a lot younger in person.
Yeah, well, so do you.
Hello, uh, everybody. Uh, I'm, I'm Fran Way, coastal engineer. I've been working with the town to, since about, uh, two thousand seventeen. Um, we're just going to kind of go over the beach projects, uh, just from, you know, north to south. General overview first off is the, just the eleven miles of shoreline. We have phase one up near New River Inlet, uh, down the different, the different shorelines, uh, phase two, three, four, and five. And five is down near the, the Surf City town limit. As you can see, there's, there's, there has been, there's either planned activity or there's been recent activity on all these beaches. All these shorelines actually do, do, do need work. Uh, and then the town is working hard to kind of, to, to kind of keep up with this erosion. Uh, and then we'll just go over the individual projects here on the next slides. Next slide, Ricky. Uh, and this was the, this was, you know, last, uh, February. Uh, the, the Core did place about seventy-seven thousand cubic yards of material up on the north end. Uh, that material, it's, it's in the system now. Uh, you, you don't really, you can't see that material anymore, but really adding that sys- sand into the system and kind of letting the physics move it where it wants to, it's, it's a good idea to bring in this new sand. Uh, and the, the Core has, this is a tough one. The Core does the, these projects, you know, every other year. And they always complain about this one, because it's a really long amount of pipeline from the, uh, from the A I W W and then the Jacksonville Channel. But it is a good. But it is a good project, and uh historically, it has been better. And it has, you know, I and I guess in Chris Gibson, we we trying to work to try to make this project more efficient. Uh but this is a core project, and we're just kind of just just giving them input, and they're they're pretty set in their ways. But we will continue to push to make this more efficient and get this material a little farther south. Uh next slide. Uh and this this is the the phase five mitigation, this is about a year and a half ago, the project, this is a beach project, and the the it is at the the Upland Truck Hall sand, and it's a little bit, all the sand we put on the beaches is compatible. This m- material is a little bit coarser, it's all compatible, it's good color, and the slightly coarser material does help and stay a little bit better. Uh this this beach has held up to kind of the recent wave and surge events and and some of the recent hurricanes. We can go to the next slide. And here's the phase four shoreline, this was completed last spring. The the this beach is the same material, it's that truck haul material, it's, you know, nice color, it's slightly coarser on the the beach compatible spectrum. It's uh it's good material, it held up well to the recent uh wave and surge events, and you know, even Hurricane Aaron previously. And then we'll get up to uh the next slide, please Ricky. This is another image of just kind of the phase four nourishment from last spring that we we have finished up. And then we can go one more. Here's the the disposal area 143, this is the the next major project that is planned. This is for phases one, two, and three, and this is going to be a big nourishment, and then and the phases one, two, and three do need a big nourishment. Uh and it is basically using that disposal area, that disposal area has been used by the Corps for decades. Lot of sand in there, and it's usually good sand. Uh this will be a kind of a beneficial reuse of that disposal area where we take that material out, and then that disposal area can be used again. From now on, only non-compatible beach material will be put in there, but previously, decades past, they they put in beach compatible material in there. That m- material is uh, you know, and Chris Gibson, T I Coast are leading that effort, still working on easements to uh to be able to use that property. It it that because it is a nice habitat now, and Wildlife Resources Commission is uh really enjoys that little bird island kind of habitat. Uh and and they're they're giving so a little resistance. Uh but you know, it's with the project is moving forward. Yes.
Just go back to the other slide. I I I don't know if it was Chris's presentation or yours, I I see the amount of sand that we're talking about there. Can you compare that to the amount of sand like per foot that we, because as I understand this, this is a larger project.
And I think even at the bottom of that slide, this is the largest beach nourishment ever on North Toppsil Beach. Uh the largest one prior to this was about 1.5 million, and that was in phase five. So this will be the the largest nourishment volume-wise for the the North Toppsil Beaches ever undertaken. Uh and this is the P T C eight, and Alice has mentioned that uh potential tropical cyclone eight, and you know, the the September 16, 2024, a little over a year ago, or a year, you know, 14 months ago. Uh this it did seem to be moving forward quickly, and then FEMA has the the Consolidated Resources Center, the C R C up in Washington, D.C. They really have been pushing back and trying to uh come up with other alternatives, and then a lot of times they're they're things that aren't even allowed or things that wouldn't even work. Uh so we had to really kind of hit back at them, and then with, they were trying to get us some FEMA technicalities, but we're very versed in FEMA, we did like the Riceville Beach uh P uh appeal, we worked with City of Jacksonville on their FEMA appeal. We know what we're talking about, we kind of went back and forth several times, it does seem like this is moving forward. Obviously, there is the shutdown that might slowing things down. You know, and Alice and I are, you know, waiting, we'd love to see that obligation come out, the obligation in that funds, but it does all seem to be working towards that, and I had to have had some back channel communications with some FEMA staff that say that is the case. And so we can go to the next slide, and then this was.
Fran, I do, I'm sorry, I do have a question on that specific slide. So a lot of folks in the northern area, St. Regis, Dolphin Shores, you know, kind of right south of Topsil Reef, have experienced a significant amount of erosion, but a lot of that seems to be King Tide related, not necessarily the tropical cyclone. So when people are asking me, are we getting sand, I'm trying to explain that we're able to replace what was lost in the tropical storm, but it may not be what they've truly lost, would that be accurate?
That's completely accurate, uh basically, I guess the metrics that FEMA uses is they go by the county. So they've built the whole county, Anzo County, they'll they'll take your population into account, they'll take the damage into account. And then the the governor also has to declare a state of emergency for FEMA to come in, and then they have to do their metrics to see if they qualify. P T C eight was actually a weird one too, because that wasn't even, you know, a a real storm. But that one did qualify for, you know, three counties here, Pender and and Brunswick as well. Uh so but yes, so every single storm event, major storm event, a lot of times if it's just hitting the beach, and really, but the inland, just a few miles inland is everything's okay, uh a lot of times FEMA probably will not get involved.
But so if in some of those cases, they could have potentially lost 10 feet or more of their dune line.
Yes.
They are not getting nearly that back.
Yes, where basically, we have to do calculations to say that that we are only allowed to put enough sand back to prevent a five-year storm, and so then we have to do all these calculations to figure out the dune erosion of a five-year storm. And a lot of times, the these storms are much, you know, Florence was obviously much bigger than that, they took out a lot more sand. And when we go back, we're only allowed to put in, you know, a five-year storm of dunes worth of sand. So yes, we we're not, you know, completely replacing that that dune back to, you know, pre-storm conditions.
Thank you.
So just just real quick, so everybody understands, that is separate than the beach project that we're getting ready to do. So what you have laid out is that's related to FEMA, when we're looking at the project that you just described, the the big project.
Yes.
That is going to replace the dunes and stuff, that's beyond what you're, one is FEMA money to do something after a storm. Our big project will rebuild the dunes behind the St. Regis, as I've discussed, or as Chris has mentioned and other stuff. So what I'm saying is, people look at this and say, wait a minute, I'm only getting a piece of it back. That's separate than the project that we're doing, correct?
Correct, correct.
That just to be clear, because you know, I'm big on expectations, whether people like it or not, just like to get it out there. We don't have a timeline for when the big project will start yet. We have a desire, but we don't have permits in hand, which would actually give us the start date. Well, I'm just saying, we're working on it, but. Okay.
Uh yes, so and it is, you know, even the town, for even the 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 phase five shoreline they have down, and and that's not in a Cobra zone, so that's easier.
Yep.
Uh but yes, the town had to initially finance that 1.5 million cubic yard back in 2015 to establish that engineered beach uh category. And then from then on, you are, that federal funding is available. And then for up here, where it's just the category B, and that's just dune restoration, and that's kind of what what we're talking about with with uh Mayor McDermott, which is that uh that's that five-year storm thing, the category B, when the category G, that's engineered beach, there's lots of categories in the in the acronyms.
That's why you're here.
Apologize. Uh yes. Uh okay, next slide. And then so we did actually start on this project in last, the the very end of April and early May to uh to to place in the areas where there really was no sand at all, if there was no dune at all, where any kind of high tide, King Tide event, water would rush into the into the roadway and 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 you know, a lot of the stuff that happened at at the the County Access Four, where they had no dune there, and just any any single kind of high tide event with waves would just, you know, would flood and flood the roadway. We did not want that, so we did put this this material up there, about 8,000 cubic yards in in those areas to prevent that. And it it has, these have held up. And then so the next slide, please Ricky. This is the rest of the, the project will start pretty much as soon as you get onto the island, all the way up to the the Topsil Reef condos. The the contractor uh will start in January, and that's is goo- good in terms of that is the colder months where we won't have, you know, people on the beach, and then even the the Christmas and the holiday events and everything, when people, more people are on the beach. They have, they do, they are flexible on the order of work, and that that will be good as well, where we can, if the Board wants to have any ideas, we talked with, I talked with Alice, if they want to start, you know, south of the pier first, and then go up and do, you know, north of the pier, or they want to start at that Jenkins Way access, and then work south towards the pier, or start at Jenkins Way, and you know, start at the Topsil Reveals and come down. And then if any other, if any folks are working on a sandbag project, we are allowed to put sand on top of the bags now. So uh yeah, and then and now it is with bags that Kama is allowing folks to use sand on the beach. And that that's not a great, that is similar, and as as Alderman Benson mentioned, it's similar to scraping, where you're taking sand from the lower beach, putting it to the upper beach, this time it is in bags, which is good, they're a little more, but it is, it's it they used to require you to truck in sand, and even with the Topsil Reef condos, I know they had to truck in sand whenever they're thick, and obviously their their bags are, you know, they're structured.
Cover those sandbags quickly before they change their mind again?
Yeah, and and maybe put some material kind of right in front of the bags, and see, and obviously, it's, we don't, the the contractor damaging the bags, the brand-new bags is is, we can't do that. So it is tough as well, and then even working up there, there's there are a lot of like uh decks and overwalks that that make, it's it's going to be tricky, especially up, you know, yeah, on the on the northern end, and that is the end that needs it the most, but it that that will be the trickiest part.
Just just to follow, and I think this is what you said, we know now St. Regis is putting sandbanks behind there, it's a temporary thing. So those, in our big project, those can be covered up too, so they're not have to put them and take them out, because they had a temporary thing, apparently that's been taken out now, but they're putting sandbags in, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, I mean, the 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 state has always kind of considered the bags quote-unquote temporary, but then they hardly ever, and then they, every now and then, they try to get someone to remove them, and then they get all caught up, and it gets up to the higher ups in the state, and then they say, leave them.
Yeah, but to my point, um Fran, they have changed that determination over and over. Like sometimes we are allowed to cover, sometimes we're not allowed to cover, so um I'm not saying people should prepare to take their bags out, but you know, it just seems to go back and forth with the state.
Yeah, okay, it is a bit of a moving target.
Yeah, just like the walkways.
And it's listed in their permit conditions.
Oh, is it, they can leave them?
It is.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, excellent.
Well, that's perfect.
What does it say?
It it says that it they can be covered in sands, specifically for the application that we're they're they're referring to.
That's a St. Regis one?
For St. Regis, yes.
Oh, that's perfect. Good.
Okay, and I think just the last slide, and we just pretty much coordinated, just to summarize, and it is uh, as Alice mentioned, the nor'easter on the weekend of October 11 and 12, uh it was about a two-and-a-half-foot uh surge, and then we had really big tides at that time, and which is really worst-case scenario, with large waves over several days. Uh and so, yeah, the the it was it was bad, and and it's and it's not a tropical storm or hurricane, it's just a a nor'easter. The, as I mentioned before, the pretty much south of the pier did not do too bad. North of the pier, uh Goldsboro Lane, that area, it it did okay. And then pretty much just south of Topsil Reef condos, St. Regis, uh they they got hit the worst. And and uh and then we can adjust our dune project, our 53,000 cubic yards of dunes, to try to get, put a little bit more material up that way, and I think it probably is needed. And then, of course, there is not much beach, so when we do put that dune material there, uh it it might, a lot of that might just kind of get into the system, but it's still in the system, and it it will help a little bit and buy buy some time, and then before the major project comes in. And uh so we'll just continue on that, and disposal area 143, we've worked on the that, that's in the easement coordination right now with the with state agencies, and uh everything else, we've we've already kind of gone over, and we'll just kind of continue moving forward with the with the with working with G W I and their, I've been, you know, working a bunch with them, trying to get all the, yeah, all all the accounting and and the invoices and and the payments things, and getting that all in in shape, so.
One of the main, the main efforts in closing out the old projects was because in in the town was allowed to do that. Um so it's not that anyone did anything wrong, I just want to make that clear. With combining the projects, it just made it more complicated and messier, which created a lot of untangling. So uh of course, as we're going through there and pulling all this information out, there has to be certifications from some someone that was here. Luckily, um you know, Fran was willing and able to sign off on those certifications, which then allowed me to review and sign off. Um so that that's been critical.
Yeah, that was pretty, because they pretty much encouraged that encouraged us to bundle Dorian and Florence, and then when it comes to the accounting afterwards, they're saying you have to separate them now. And so that was that was difficult, and uh and then the FEMA E H P, which is Environmental Historic Preservation, they are uh they they've kind of added a whole new element in complexity and red tape, uh and so that they have been a challenge as well.
We we certainly appreciate everything that you've been doing, Fran, and does the Board have any questions?
Well, thanks so much, Fran.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Fran. Okay. So the next item is the fire report. And unfortunately, you guys were busy this morning, Chad, I saw.
Good afternoon. Uh so we did uh 52 calendar days on this report from last meeting to when it was due. Yeah, I got it right here. Um 52% were fire rescue related stuff, 48% is medical, um which was a total of 64 incidents over 52-day period. And you'll notice like down at the bottom, it gives you a breakdown of days, or some days we're running 10 and 13 calls, and there's other days we're running five and six calls, so.
So it doesn't look like it slowed down much, even though the season's over?
It has a little bit.
Little bit, okay, questions?
Just one quick question, um at Monday's county meeting, they approved their getting a new fire boat?
The county is?
Yeah.
Yeah, they keep one up at Bear Creek.
Yeah, because they got, apparently they got a grant for that one.
Yeah, we we've applied for a grant um through FEMA, so with them being shut down, all those are on hold.
Well, they, it was described by their Board as barely afloat uh in terms of what they had, and then this doesn't directly relate to us. The grant seafood thing, you guys got called out on that one?
Yes, we we respond mutually with Turkey Creek.
And?
And. Oh, it's out.
I thought I read no injuries.
No injuries, no one was there. And they're digging it out now, trying to figure out the cause, so that's going on right now. Uh Deputy Chief Harley is over there assisting with that. So we we do both, so not only do we assist with the fire, we we assist with the investigation, origin, and cause as well. So myself, Deputy Chief Harley, um one of our captains, he's about to get certified as C F I as well, so we're uh, he just got approved by the state, so.
Do you have any openings right now?
No, ma'am, we are full, full of staff.
Great, okay, and and looking forward to budget next year, can be looking for, looking at where you are kind of financially so that when G W I turns over these worksheets and all, like we can start prepping for budget and thinking about what y'all might need next year. Yeah, for planning.
Okay, perfect, thank you, sir. And the next item is the police report.
We continue to make lots of security checks, which you see in there, each officer is assigned, is told how many to make every shift, so that's why you see all of those, we're also doing area patrols and marking out on those, so that if somebody calls on a particular neighborhood, I can say who was there, that, what was going on. So that if somebody calls on a particular neighborhood, I can say who was there, that, what was going on, that kind of thing. Of course, our domestics picked up in the October reporter show, those are up a little bit too, got cold, everybody stayed inside, I guess. We've had some thefts recently, uh, the town parks, we lost a heater out of one of the bathrooms. We do have a picture of the suspect and a picture of the truck, so we've been working on that with us and the other agencies around in, uh, the county.
A heater that was attached to the wall?
It was attached to the wall.
Okay.
All you, all you really had to do was just unhook it from its, uh, the mounting bracket, and they took off with it. But we are working those, I answer any questions you have, but anything else?
Just, just one thing is a fault, this came from the county meeting again, they've got their new drone system that they're talking about, that they just approved. And I know nothing except what happened in, in Monday in the meeting, but one of the commissioners told me if we wanted to participate in that, the only thing we would have to do is buy a drone, which is different, I think, than what they were talking to you about before, I just wanted to give you a heads up.
We have a drone.
Right, but we could hook into their system and stuff too, so it would be basically.
They were talking about a system where they would mount one here and dispatch would launch that drone out, uh, say officer got a call for a water rescue or whatever, fire department got one, the drone would go out ahead.
So then you have.
Dispatch would be able to.
Dispatch at the county level that may not know which beach access it is here.
Well, it'll be, they're all nine-one-one, um, assigned, so the, the drone would go to that address. We have been using our own drones, which have been very effective, like the water rescue that turned into a drowning. Our drone operator was pulling up at the time, and he, he flew that drone for over two hours, which is kind of difficult, because the batteries don't last, and the wind was very strong. That's been very effective for us, I'll, I'll check into that, because the cost of it was gonna be really too high for us.
My, my concern, um, mayor, was that we don't want two drones flying in, for the same thing, and no coordination between the two of them, and so when, when this came up with them approving this system, I was like, you know, it's just, we need to be aware of what they're doing too, and, and coordinating it, and like you said, the last time they presented to us, chief, we didn't want to participate because the cost was off the charts, right?
Cost was.
Question, so from our new finance person, Wayne, for this one that we're looking at, the budget amendment, it says accept a grant from NCO, SB, um, whatever.
That was the, that was the drone that we already.
That's the one we already have.
Already have, we have drone in the budget, and I think some of that, the town manager can probably speak to it, but some of that money, we, we have not bought that drone yet, because we're waiting to coordinate those, those items.
So, and that.
We will be purchasing a new drone, um, and it will be with the grant funds that we anticipate getting, um, that was a state grant, um, that I applied for, it was for the, if you recall back a, a while ago, it was, um, through, um, Carson Smith's office.
Yep, I remember.
Um, it was for the, a drone and for the rock server.
That was a long time ago.
And we went forward under the premise of, we needed, uh, the, those were critical items that we needed, uh, so whether we got the grant or not, we were going forward. We, obviously, we bought the drone in advance, so what we're going to do is now that we've got those, um, funds, and that's why you see the budget amendment, we're going to purchase another grant, another drone with those grant funds, and that's, we've already cleared it with the state that that's allowed.
So then we'll have two, and do we know if they'll coordinate, or we could use them with the county system, or they'd just be an independent system?
You just found out.
They'd be independent, but it's just like when we flew the other day, the drone operators are, are certified, and they all have to have a, a license. Like when we had the, uh, water rescue and, uh, Coast Guard was coming in, they have to coordinate with Coast Guard, because once they get so close, we have to make sure all the drones are out. But they, they know how to do those.
A situation like that, you've got an incident commander on site right there, and he's,
Right.
that's what he's doing, right?
They coordinate all that, but they, they've been trained on all that too, so they're, they're.
But Tom, that was, that was my concern, that, exactly, you've got three things flying up there.
Yeah, you got a guy on site. You got a guy on site to charge the overall operation and, you know, so we think that he's, he's directing what's going on. You know, and you got three of them up there, you don't have thirty, so it's not too much for one person to handle.
And we have two, two people certified.
We have two, and we're waiting on some more classes, some of these classes, we had to travel too far, we're waiting to see if they can have some a little bit closer for the officers to go to.
So we've got two NPD that are certified right now, and you've been working on, uh, on more, and we also have, um, our IT person, Ricky.
Ricky's also certified.
Is also certi, has been certified, so, and he's assisted too, especially, uh, in the last event where, uh, during the day after PD worked for so long, you know, he's able to assist and step in and run the drone when needed as well.
So then, I just have one other question, there was a question that I've seen recently about e-bikes, and I wanted to know from your perspective, chief, are you seeing an issue with e-bikes? Because here's my concern, is we have so many ordinances now that most of them are difficult to enforce. So if we were to come up with any new ordinances, they have to be enforceable, so I was wondering, I haven't heard, heard you say we have an issue.
And they'd have to also be in cooperation with the state law too, because by, e-bikes are just like bicycles, just like one, Alderman Leonard rides a good bit, they, and they generally ride just like bicycles ride, we hadn't had a problem with that on Knockon Wood, uh, we hadn't had a lot of them on the, the beach.
I mean, I have an e-bike, and I can tell you, I don't go more than ten miles an hour if that's even powered on.
Hadn't any complaints about speed.
You've still got the training wheels on that one, right? Yeah, I got eight hundred forty-five miles on that bike now, I had to put new tires on it after the, uh,
Riding all the time.
After breast cancer ride.
But I did want your opinion, because I think when we are looking to, if we have to create ordinances, it should be to solve a problem.
Right.
And then it should be with your input that we can actually enforce it, and in accordance with the law.
That's it, and we hadn't had issues with those e-bikes.
Okay, I did, I did ask somebody politely, kind of, to get off the dune the other day, and I thought about calling, but it's fine.
We've had some other calls about dunes, and I'd like to, to say this, people will call us a day later or two days later.
Well, you can't do anything if they don't see it.
And I, and I can't help, and so I go back out with the non-emergency number, if you'll call us, that's the quickest way for us to get there, because they, they hit the officer on the radio, the officer goes straight to the call.
Right, and I, I do try to explain that too, but if you don't personally see it, you can't, you can't say Sally was on the dune, and, yeah, so that's the way it works.
Right, you can't, I can't do anything about it.
Okay, thanks, everybody, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
And so next would be the finance department that, uh, Ricky wanted to call out.
Just, just two quick ones, I know, Allison knows this, under capital project maintenance, under the double I, it talks about investment income is one point three-three-four million, and is over budget. She clarified to me, that is a cumulative amount, because if we got that in three months, we'd have a hundred million dollars invested right now, so that is a cumulative amount in there over a period of time.
Correct. Correct.
And then just a quick one, and the other one, and maybe this would be for Wayne, um, to answer, under B and the, on the, uh, what we processed this year, I'm sorry, under this thing, we had checks of about three hundred and forty-three thousand, but we, the majority of the stuff went out as ACH. Are those, do we know, are those scheduled type of things, like, as, as an alderman, I sign checks, but I don't approve ACH things. So if he could, maybe you know what the process is for that, that could have been something scheduled, because those are, those are notes, right?
Yes, the, the ACHs are scheduled, and yes, that's not something that you're, you're signing. But that is something that we're, um, looking at going forward on, um, you know, dial, actually reversing some of those so that more goes through check runs.
Okay, I, I was just look, because of the.
Based on the, some of the issues that we've seen over the past year, just trying to work through those.
Yeah, because if you look at that page, the cash, the cash they're showing, the total disbursements are like two point three million, but only checks for hundred, three hundred and forty-three thousand, so I figured they had to be scheduled stuff, particularly for like SOBs and the other one, right? There's a scheduled way in advance.
Yes, yeah, and our last SOBs was, um, done in October.
Thank you, under those.
Okay, ready to move on? All right, we're gonna move on to new business, to the snowflake light project update. Alderman, I'll chef ski, I'm not sure what questions you have, since they're up now.
So, we have our public works person around. First of all, I'd like to thank the guys that worked on them, because I know they had to restring them all. They had to restring the lights, and they had to powder coat the frames, and they had to redo them all before they put them up, and so they're looking really good. The question was, as we look forward, is, we had had a budget change to this line item to add additional funds to make it through this season, and I wanted to know how we were doing on that, and looking forward, do we think we need to again take a look at budget for the next budget?
Yes, ma'am, uh, good afternoon, mayor, board, I appreciate being here, um, to answer the, the question concisely, yes, we, we needed to adjust funds. Primarily, it was a combination of degradation of the snowflakes that were not sent off to be recoded. And then adding, adding into that, a request to purchase twenty additional, brand new from production, snowflakes. My long-term plan with that is to try and cycle out fifteen to twenty per year, and make sure the inventory we do have is in a three to five year rotation. Couple that with, excuse me, couple that with, uh, some conflicts we had with the, the timers associated to them, unfortunately, we can weatherproof them as much as we want, but the corrosive salty air eats at those photo sensors pretty, pretty poorly. So, that and the brackets, there, there was a little bit of a bump in, in the overall budget for this year. But that was going to fall in line with, with the request I was gonna make for next year's budget is, is an increase in funds, to allow us to continue to cycle those new, those new snowflakes in the inventory.
And we have been cycling new ones for the last, um, last two years into the inventory.
Go ahead, I just, I was just gonna make a comment, go ahead.
Well, thanks for doing that work, and, and thinking ahead to that, that's what we wanted to do with this project, keep going. And I think Surf City's auctioning off some of their lights, is what I heard, yeah.
I've seen a large amount on Facebook Marketplace.
We're trying to be consistent.
I want a mermaid, I want a mermaid.
You gotta go bid on it.
And a pirate.
You gotta go bid on them, so, but thank you so much, because the guys that are working on them, they're looking very nice, thanks.
Thank you.
Just a heads up, and I, I, I love those things, the funny thing is, to your point of the timers, they're not all exact. Because when I pulled out of my driveway, somebody riding with me, ours hadn't turned on yet, because the timer was a little bit different, when it came back, they were on, but I was like, oh, dear God, please don't let the one in front of my house not be turning on, but those look great, they really do.
Thank you, yeah, well, one more additional point, if I can inject, is, um, we did have a meeting with Joe MC on Monday. It was at the Topsail Beach Town Hall, and it was ourselves, Surf City, and Topsail Beach's Public Works Departments. Joe MC is pushing, uh, a, a, a standard across all three municipalities to, to standardize the runners that drop from the transformers down to the outlet box, so we will be fabricating fifteen to twenty additional runners that, uh, once built out, we'll coordinate with Joe MC, and they'll, they'll do the installation of it to make sure it's meeting all the required codes. But that will be an additional cost that wasn't baked into this year's budget, that would be further justification to increase it, so I didn't want to not, not speak to that meeting, because it was just this Monday.
Great, thank you. Yeah, be smart to comply with Joe's also.
Yes, ma'am, very much.
And I have a question, um, the ones cycled out, are the ones cycling back in, are they just snowflakes, or are they other shapes as well, or what were we doing with that?
So the, the twenty this, this year on the PO that's been approved are the six-foot snowflakes, the presidential snowflakes, just as we already have posted throughout town, the, uh, the unique decorations, the candles, the deer, the trees, it's kind of been a, a work in progress, getting my feet underneath me, making sure I know what we have.
Okay.
Uh, but that, that would be something we roll into next year, ma'am.
All right, thank you so much, they look great, I love them.
And the mermaids and the pirates?
We can look into mermaids and pirates, sir, absolutely.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, we are gonna move on to item C, which is the contract award for Maven Roofing Public Works Roof Repair Project, or Roof Replacement, I guess it's a replacement project. So I'm gonna request a motion to approve CA twenty twenty-six dot twenty-six dash twenty-one, contract award Maven Roofing for the Public Works Roof Project, twenty-five zero zero three as presented.
Motion to approve?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
While we're looking at this roof, I'm wondering.
Oh, I did.
Yep, she did.
I did. Can we go back up to B?
No, go to seven.
Okay, we're gonna, I'm sorry, everybody, we're gonna go back up to B, twenty twenty-six dot twenty-six dot twenty, Fun Ten Police Buildings Public Works. So we're requesting a motion to approve a budget amendment, twenty-six dot twenty-six dash twenty for the Public Works Roof.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Now, any discussion? All in favor?
No.
Well, I think you won it on the next one, didn't you, what?
Okay.
Okay, so that's approved, all in favor, and then now the next one, Laura's where I think you had a question. Twenty twenty-six dot twenty-six dot twenty-one, the contract award for Maven Roofing Public Works Roof Project. So I'm gonna request a motion a second, and then see if we have any questions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes.
So on this one, I know we're looking at a roof, but has anyone looked at the structural integrity of that building, so we're not putting a new roof on a building that we don't know is structurally sound?
Not, not at this time, we haven't, um, based off of my assessment of the building initially, and, and just the outlook itself, we, we started with the roof. That was obvious, in, in my first day here, that was the primary need for that building.
And that's what the board had approved in the budget?
So, I guess what I'm asking you, since you're here now.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you need to be asking us for something else, or do we need to look at this as a larger project?
Uh, the guidance probably that, that I would ask for is, is what the long-term intent is for that building, if, if we're doing a complete reconstruction or a brand-new building, um, then, you know, spending this amount of money on a roof probably is, isn't the most fiscally responsible. So I, I don't want to make a repair that's gonna get demolished and rebuilt in a short amount of time. But if the intent is to keep the footprint we have, salvage what, what the building is capable of keeping, and then, uh, put, put in a new outer layer on it with, with walls and insulation, um, some of that we can do in-house with the public work staff that we have in terms of installation and wiring to code. But the roof and the, uh, the outer covering of the building would probably be the two most needed renovations if we're gonna keep the, the framework of the building and the foundation itself.
So. I think we're all in agreement that the, the building needs a new roof. Okay, I think we're all in that agreement. I'm in the same boat, I mean, I look at this, potentially when we have a bid for a hundred, nearly a hundred K, and then we have a bid for what are the other two, seventy, and then the other one's fourteen, and, you know, I, I, I don't want us to put a balanced, blueprinted Hemi engine in a pickup truck that's got holes this big of rust in the frame and, and the body, and, you know, I think, I think the big picture is, what are we gonna do with the building? If we maybe put a roof on it that that satisfies our immediate and short-term needs while we decide what our long-term plan is for that building, because I think there's been some talk, in fact, I know there's been some talk around this table about, once we got the fire station all done, that probably the next building we needed to look at was yours.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, given everything down there, and I've been in that building, and it's pretty expeditionary.
Very much, yes, sir.
Okay, and he knows what that means, so I don't know, I'm, I'm torn here, you know, I think we need a new roof, but I don't know if we need the Cadillac roof going on a, on a Hyundai chassis.
And we've talked about this, um, a good bit too, uh, the, the the timing of this is, we, we knew that we needed a roof, and, um, so there was estimates that were requested at budget time, so that we got that, because there's, there's literally, uh, you've got fifteen buckets catching water.
Yes, ma'am.
At a time, it's bad, um, you know, the intent, you know, when I came on board and looked at the list of capital needs at that point in time, the Public Works Building was identified to be addressed after the fire station was addressed, obviously, the fire station has taken, um, longer than we anticipated. Hopefully, hopefully, that it's going to be the board's intent to look long-term at replacing that building within the next, the next couple of years.
So, would that, would it is needed?
Let me follow up my comment and then I'll be done. Another aspect I think we need to, we need to measure here is how we might box ourselves in for future, what we end up doing with that building if we drop 100K on a roof. Okay, if we've invested that much money in that old expeditionary building, have we turned a corner that we can't recover from? And have we, have we made some, made some decisions financially that we wouldn't have otherwise made if maybe we'd spent less money, substantially less money?
There's other solutions that are less expensive that I know that Chris has vetted with the contractors that are even, you know, within my approval limits. You know, that certainly, but again, I don't want to say, I would not, I don't want to say to the board that, you know, don't, don't do the roof. If you're not, there's not gonna be an intention. You know, you need to do something. My recommendation would be to, to, you know, go back, look at the lower-cost scenarios with the intention of the board, if it is the intention of the board, to seriously consider the replacement of that building.
And I think that the board has discussed at the budget time as well, the need to replace that building. I think it's just gonna be timing. So, if there is a lower-cost option that is more palatable, that would give us a couple of years, because, I mean, it takes plan, it takes time to plan the new building. It's not just magically gonna go up. So, we need to get, you know, some time out of it, but maybe a less expensive option, knowing that you don't get to take the roof off and keep it and put it on the new one.
And I think the building needs a new roof. I'm sorry Connie, and I promise I will shut up now. I, I, I agree the building needs a new roof and I don't think that's the issue. I think it's how, how high-end a new roof it needs. And if we can get something cheaper to get us through, and not a patch job, but a new roof, but maybe a, a lower-cost alternative.
Yeah, 15 buckets, that's embarrassing. You should not have to put up with that. I, what Ellis was saying, anything we can do just to hold over for the next couple of years and then get you either a new building or use the framework for the old building, like you were talking, whatever is, whatever seems to be in the works for it. But yeah, that building, yeah, thank you.
Go ahead, man, I've got one coming.
So, right now, we were looking at a metal standing seam roof.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, which is a terrific roof. But if we look at something less and then you come back with some recommendations to the board as to what you really think needs, needs to happen, then the board needs to start planning for that and start looking at a replacement building if that's your suggestion. So, come back to us with, you know, options for a lower-cost roof and what we would be looking at in a specification kind of for a new building before we would go out to bid. But we do need to start looking at that from a planning perspective because I think everybody here knows that building needs, needs work.
And just to go back to what the mayor talked about, two comments. One is, knowing how slow these things move, a temporary solution that lasts for a year, is something that I would support. So, it's got a, you know, knowing that, I think, did you say a couple of years? Did you say a couple, something like that is very good. But the other thing I would say is, given the fact that this is leaking into Connie's point about the buckets and stuff, I don't think we want to be talking about this three months from now in terms of getting something out there. Because I think the consensus is the board is finding something that works short-term, right?
Yeah, but I think short-term is gonna have to be a couple of years because, I mean, look at the challenges we had with base flood and everything else with permitting on the fire station. I don't know if Public Works is gonna be any different.
If, if I may, just to jump in, I don't want to belabor the point. But realistically, I think one of three directions is gonna help me clarify what answers to give is if we're gonna potentially renovate the current standing building and operate out of it during that renovation, that's the biggest question. Because if we're doing a tear-down and rebuild completely, whether it's in that location or a different one, the question is, materials and equipment, where are we operating from? So, we've already scrounged parts and materials and conducted sectional repairs of the roofs to mitigate most of the leaks, not all. So, this was just a broad scope in terms of, because there was already, I think, three bids and by the time I came on staff in July, this most recent one, the cost difference was specifically aluminum and the longevity of the roof from the vendor, because their intent was if we're gonna get a roof, they want it to be a permanent one. But I also understand from the board's perspective, we want, we also want a permanent building. So, I can, I can go back and work on those different courses of action to give you options. And in the meantime, if it, if it puts us all in concert, we can just continue to do spot repairs and maintenance on the roof ourselves.
Well, I would just say to continue to work with Ms. Darian because she said that some of the options that were presented are within her expert, her approval limits. So, it may not be something that has to come back to the board, but definitely the board would like to hear what your thoughts and plans are as far as whether we can renovate this building or whether the whole thing needs to, needs to be replaced.
And just, just going back to the structural issues very quickly. If you're asking my preference, my preference is if we have to tear this thing down, we're right back to getting property. We're doing those kind of stuff. And to your point, that goes on forever. So, if you, not asking you to be a structural engineer, but you're gonna have a pretty good feeling about whether you can actually at least use the footing for this type of thing to be able to build a nice building. Because I think that kind of changes your view. Because if that's not solid, then you're, we don't have another choice.
Yeah, I'm piggybacking onto that, the structural integrity of what is already there. If it's got good bones and we just have to rebuild it, that's, reconfigure it, that's fine. But I worry about, I worry about the danger. I worry about just storms and winds and just so much. But I'm glad you're there to check it out for us and keep us apprised and work with Ms. Darian. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are not making a motion on that one. What we're doing is directing staff to continue to work together on what the best option is.
And I think consensus also was that we were, since it's within Alice's authority, if there's an option that she feels comfortable with, to go ahead. Is that the consensus?
Yes.
For a near-term solution, yes.
Madam Mayor, based, Madam Mayor, based on the discussion that you've had, there was a motion in second. So, you could either call for the vote or I believe Alderman Plettle is willing to withdraw her motion at this time.
I'd like to withdraw the motion.
Thank you, Ms. Darian. Okay. Okay, so then we, thank you, sir. We are going to move on to BA, you're just throwing so many numbers at me this, this month here. So, BA 2026 dash 26 dot 22 Fund 30 amended TI Coastal and Maynard Nexon. And we're looking for a request, a motion to approve BA 2026 dash 26 dot 22 as presented. Do we have a motion in a second and then we'll do questions?
So, move. Second.
Any questions?
Since he's sitting there and we've got two of these in a row, could we?
Sure.
Bring forth the expert. No, he's fine.
You better have a question if you're gonna make him walk up.
No, my question was, I'm all for these things and I think you can tell how that fits within the project and stuff too. Because we, we don't have him as an update on the big project.
So...
And not, not that he has to give that update, but I think, Chris, you can tie this all together for us. Is that fair?
So, for the audience's benefit, both of these items do tie in to the larger project, correct? So, I think everybody's desire would be to keep the projects moving, the permitting moving. But again, I'm gonna go back to timelines since I've seen on social media that some people are expecting sand for the big project in January. That's not a realistic expectation.
This January, not next January.
Yeah, 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 this January. So, I just want people to understand that complex projects like this do take time. And even getting the permits doesn't mean you have all the funds in place to do the work. There's a lot that goes into being ready to start a project.
Well, and differentiating between the emergency permits that are being issued now in a project.
Ms. Darian, did you want to say something?
Just to clarify too, this agenda item is to approve TI Coastal's contract for surveying.
As it relates to the, to the big project or just annual survey?
It's, has nothing to do with the project.
Okay, so, thank you. No, it's both.
It's both?
So, so this, what we've, what we've put before you, we've been doing annual monitoring surveys for you guys for the whole length of the town shoreline.
Yep.
For about eight years now, I believe. And what we, what's, that's done for is, one, so that any kind of nourishment, the nourishment needs that you have, you can figure out. But also, you have to do these surveys each year so that you have the data prior to hurricane season. So, if you have a storm, you can show what was lost during that storm and be able to go back to that as your before-storm survey. And then you have to storm, you have to do an after-storm survey to calculate the volumes of sand lost, et cetera. So, that, this keeps you FEMA compliant, is what these activities that we're, we're asking for do. And just to go ahead and have this in place for the next five years, we'll revisit that at that time. To kind of give you a quick update, since I'm here, on what we're doing with DA 143, if you want, if you wanted that. We have basically a 90%, 90% design, unless somebody throws a real monkey wrench at us. What has happened is, back in February of this year, Wildlife Resources took over management of DA 143. It's still owned by the state. So, when we had the one-stop meeting back in May, Wildlife Resources afterwards came back and said, "We have some concerns because the older vegetation that's on there, the trees, et cetera, may have other birds that are nesting or using that habitat, not just your normal shorebirds." So, they wanted to evaluate that. But we've kind of been, it's kind of been, there hasn't been any communication back and forth. We've actually talked to the state land office within the last couple of weeks. They're helping to try to push this forward. We've also talked to the Corps of Engineers as a secondary option because they have an easement already. If we have to get down to that brass tacks, we've talked about going through them to have them actually put out the contract because they already have the easement on the island. So, we're looking to get some options there. What we're hoping for at this point is to have permits in hand, get through this thing with Wildlife Resources. The rest of it should move fairly quickly because in the original EIS for the whole beach program, this island was evaluated as a source, but just needed to have the geotech done and flushed out. So, we've done that now. So, there shouldn't be a major documentation or anything that has to go on to get the permits. We're hoping to have those in place sometime around May. And with that, we would go ahead, as soon as we did that, we would go out to bid so that we could do all the clearing and grubbing and get the site prepped to dredge over the summer so that when November 15th rolls around, we can go right to work on, on pumping. So, we would be looking at November of next year to start that. It would take the whole entire winter to do because it is two and a half million yards. And, but if we go much past about, if we get pushed back to July permitting, it's gonna be real tight to get the project done and get it done in one season because the clearing will take too long and we won't get to start up till January or something and that's just gonna be too late.
Okay. So, to stay on topic, does anybody have questions about the surveying? And thank you very much for the update, Chris.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so then I am going to ask, on the first one that I had mentioned, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve BA 2026 dash 26 dot 22 as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? And then on the next one is the Contract Award for TI Coastal's Annual Monitoring. And that's a request of motion to approve CA 2026 dot 26 dash 23 Contract Award TI Coastal Annual Monitoring as presented. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Okay, we are gonna move on to the next item, which is the Contract Award RCP Marine Dolphin Shores Public Access Pier. And I am going to request a motion to approve the Contract Award as presented for the Dolphin Shores Public Access Pier Repair. And this is the pier behind the North End Fire Station.
Motion to approve.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope. And now we have an open forum. Do we have anybody, Lexi, signed up?
There are no signups.
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? Mr. Barfoot?
Mark Barfoot, 246 Sandpiper Drive. I came up here to speak about the gobble-wobble, but with things that transpired at this meeting, I feel that it's urgent that I inform the public and the viewers of full transparency. The other two aldermen elect are clean. If anybody wants to throw stones, throw them at me. Also, I don't know what everybody's heard, but the third alderman's seat, as far as I'm concerned, is still up for grabs. Nothing has been certified, nothing's official. So, when everybody comes to me and says, "Congratulations," I try to tell them, "Nothing's official. Sit back, relax, let the Board of Elections do their job." All right. Gobble-wobble, Thanksgiving, November 27th. Thank you and apologies to Wendy. She has been very helpful to me. I've been very busy, but that is no excuse. We're still planning on doing everything exactly like we did last year for all those people that are watching online. Other than that, I don't have anything. Thank all of you for what you do. God bless you.
Thanks, Mark. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in the audience? Yes, sir. If you could just state your name and address.
Hi, my name's Jake Durrell. I'm a part-time resident at The Reef. I've talked to a few folks here about, I used to be a director in The Reef, so I'm not, but I'm not now. I'm not speaking, you know, officially for The Reef or anything. But I'm, I've talked to a few folks about the possibility of flooding mitigation assistance. It's, we're a piece of Topsail that is carved out of the Cobra Zone. So, there, and I, sometime last year, we talked about the potential of, because we put sandbags up, you know, early on, a pretty intensive project. And I believe your coastal engineer said that's been, been a benefit to not only our property but also neighboring properties. And, you know, now it's getting beat up and this project's coming along. We'd like to get it cleaned up before that comes along. And there is the potential, from the Department of Environmental Quality said that, of using the flooding mitigation assistance for this, but it does need a town, the town to sponsor it. The town can get a 5% administrative fee in that, so it should, should be at no cost to the town. If anything, possibly, you know, maybe a profit for the town's time, I don't know. But I do know the town is trying to get, you know, reduce the scope of that Cobra Zone. And I think participating in projects like this would lend some credit to that. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Madam Mayor, if I could just get his address.
Sure, what was your unit number at The Reef, sir?
2182 New River Inlet Road, Unit 278.
Thank you. Would you like to speak, ma'am?
Phyllis Umbarger, 126 Seagull Lake, excuse me. I just want to reiterate on something that Susan said earlier, dealing with the projected newly-elected alderman. Her incident is not an isolated one. I find myself also threatened by this gentleman. I cannot go out on my deck without him coming out and staring. I cannot go in my backyard without him intimidating me. Recently, there were lights put up and there's only two that are shining directly into my bedroom window. Recently, there were lights put up, and there's only, um, two that are shining directly into my bedroom window, where the other ones are shining onto his management property. Um, I have addressed this with the Chief of Police, that I feel threatened as a, um, older widowed woman that lives by herself. So I just wanted you all to be aware that these things are going on. And if he is elected on this board, I hope that you all hold him to a higher standard because he will be res- um, representing North Toppsil. And I don't want to have to move because I don't think I can get what I put into it. And I have come here from the mountains to, uh, live the rest of my life out in peace, in harmony, and I'm finding that hard to do on this island. So just to let you know, this is not an isolated incident. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, then we are going to move on to the attorney's report.
Nothing to report at this time, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Um, I also, as I said, I don't have a large report this, this time. I do want to thank everyone who did go out and vote, and I want to welcome the, um, potentially new elected officials that are, that are going to be sitting on the board, and I hope that the board can continue to make good decisions, working together, to benefit all of the residents of North Toppsil Beach. That's all I have. Um, Connie, I'm not going to pick on you first. I'm going to pick on, you, are you ready?
I'm ready.
All right, we're going to go, Connie.
Um, thank you all for coming out or watching at home. Um, please, if you can, try to make plans to attend the November nineteenth, um, tree lighting. Uh, it's a really good time. Last year was just fabulous. I also want to thank everyone for their condolences for my husband, and that's all I have.
Uh, thank you everyone for coming out. Like the mayor, congratulate the, uh, those that were elected to the new town board, uh, recently, and appreciate those that supported my candidacy. Thank you.
No report.
Okay.
Um, our recent election showed us that voting is a powerful tool that allows us to shape our town government, influence policies, and drive social change. It is both a right and a responsibility that ensures the functioning and integrity of our democracy. By participating in elections, we uphold the principles of free society, hold our leader, leaders accountable, and contribute to a community that reflects the will of the citizens. I want to thank everyone who voted and look forward to working with the new mayor and the new elected officials. As we approach the holiday season here on the island, in all the hustle and bustle, please keep to our posted speed limits and keep an eye out for each other's properties as we do see an increase a little bit in broken pipes in the freezing weather and also property issues for the vacant homes. So keep an eye out on your neighbor's place. Our snowflakes are starting to look terrific, and I again want to thank Public Works for that. Um, and again, join us, please, for the tree lighting on Wednesday, November nineteenth at 6:00 PM. Thank you, Mayor.
Just to say, thank you, thanks for everybody that voted, and, uh, we really like our white snowflake. Uh, and so, thank you, Public Works.
I believe it's pursuant to General Statute 143 dash 318 point 11 sub A sub 6 for personnel.
Second?
Second.
Okay, so we have come out of closed session. I need a motion to come out of closed session.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Mayor Plutin?
So you're turning it over to me?
Yes, sir.
As a result of our closed session, we provided the annual evaluation to Alastairian, our town manager, and to sum it up very succinctly, she's done a tremendous job for this town and has been probably the best manager we've ever had, and as a result of that, we are prepared to offer her a 10 percent bonus for her performance this past review period, this past year. So you'll need to make a motion, or I'll make, I'll make the motion.
That's the motion.
All right, I make the motion that we provide Manager Durian with a 10 percent bonus for her performance.
Can we have a second? Do we have all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we have one deny. Okay, so the motion passes. All right, motion to adjourn.
No, motion to go out of closed, no, we're out of closed session.
Yeah.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.